Everybody, first item on the agenda, everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes of the regular meeting of 4:24 and the special meeting of yesterday, April 30th. There's no corrections or additions. We'll approve the minutes by unanimous consent. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, I guess since we've got a couple of different groups going to be here, we'll bring the first group, we'll go ahead and let the industrial revenue bond and the presentations from Stites and Harvest go ahead and start. If you all want to address the council and kind of give us some background before we take up the resolution. My name is Mike Harrington and I'm with Stites and Harvest and I'm serving as bond counsel for the Bethlehem High School project. The one thing everybody wants to know, this is sort of the first step in a two-step process. It's the inducement resolution which just puts us in a position to go ahead and issue tax-exempt debt later when we've got all the documents ready and we find a bank lender to provide the financing. And it will be at a rate that will be lower than a conventional loan rate, commercial rate, which will help construct the project. I'll let Tom Hamilton, who is, he will explain to you what the project is. Again, this is only an inducement and a first resolution. And we'll be back later when we're ready for documents to which both the school will become a party and then also the city. But the biggest thing everybody wants to know with these is, is there any liability for the city? And the answer is no. And it's made clear in all the documents that that's the way it works. You want to explain the project?
I think you all know a little bit about what's going on, but we have, we've been in a capital campaign now for the last 20 months and we've raised about $3.9 million in that time. The first $500,000 goes to our foundation for teacher salaries and financial aid, but it leaves us with about $3.4 million. And most of that money has been given in five-year pledges. So we have a situation where we have pledged amounts of money, but not particularly a large amount of cash. And so we have asked for a bond issued for three and a half million dollars that is, will set up a line of credit for us so that we can begin construction. On phase one of the project, the entire project is estimated to be about $7 million. This one will, this one will start the process of access road into the property, which doesn't exist right now. The construction of, it will be the excavation of a great deal of the area, basically moving rock. And the construction of a field house, a stadium with a track, and a softball field. That's our phase one project. It's estimated to be, the cost of construction of that is to be around $3.5 million. This, this bond is guaranteed by the Archdiocese of Louisville. We're going to be expected to pay this bond off at the, as we, as we continue to grow and stuff and as we acquire the five-year pledges. However, if there's any issue or any situation that comes up, this is, this is a bond that's fully guaranteed by the Archdiocese of Louisville. We've been working with them, we've met with them a couple of times, and I know Vic was with us on a, in a conference call. So this is a, this is the first step. We'd like to, our plan is to, is to break ground in midsummer, get this finished up, and we're presently taking bids and doing our final work. So that's really the project.
Now, I think, Tom, in our conference call, one of the things you stated was if there would be some permitted uses by the general public of these facilities, you might want to...
I can tell you that. I, I don't, we don't really have a plan for that, but we're, we're going to do the same thing that Barstown does with their city, with their city track. It'll be open, we'll have some bike gates that will keep mechanized things off of the track. And then, you know, that's in, that's in phase one, that's really the only part, and it'll be a, we're planning on doing a turf field with artificial turf, which would be open. We might try to regulate that a little bit in terms of some things that go on out there. But there'll be a turf field, it'll be open to everybody. Phase two includes tennis courts, which we are going to open to the public. Probably not so much the softball field, I don't know, don't know that that's going to be available to just general public. We probably play some ball games in there. I don't know how that'll fit, but there's, we're certainly open to that.
Not going to be used as a part-time dog park like...
No, we're not going to use it as a dog park. Keep that out at Forests Brook.
Okay. Are there any other questions, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Harrington?
Keep chickens off the property.
Yeah, keep chickens off the track.
Tom, with your new place, will it enter off of the main road or should it come in off?
Templin. No, it's not going to, there's not going to be any access right now off of Templin, except for maybe that Lincoln Way that goes through the middle of it. And then there's Morton Extended that, that goes to that park. But actually, the plan is to extend the road up the hill from the intersection of Withrow and 245. You see that, you can see the curbing there already. That'll go, our property is really behind a set of, a set of commercial lots that are, that the Munnens are developing there in the front. We're, we're behind that. Once we get, once you go down the hill a little bit, we will, we'll go all the way across the property. Probably planning on, at least for the phase one area, we'll clear that area, hopefully, in the end of July, first of August.
Any other questions? I think we'll, I'll turn the resolution part of this over then to Tim Butler. We don't have to read the entire resolution, but I'll let him speak to Mr. Harrington's point. If you look at section two, it clearly lays out the liability issue of the Archdiocese of the City and the lack thereof. So the Archdiocese is something that won't guarantee it, and it's Bethlehem's obligation to repay it. We're just the conduit, if there would be, if this was an industrial revenue bond for a manufacturing facility or any other project like that, it's at least IRB's work. So, can you have anything else?
Yeah, well, Mayor, just the resolution, you know, it's an inducement resolution. It does have that section, section two, that talks about it's not an obligation, similar to IRBs, traditional IRBs that we've seen, it's not an obligation, general obligation on the part of the city. It would be followed up by a memorandum agreement regarding issuance of the revenue, in this case, note, probably. We've got a copy of that that also has sections, and those sections, we appreciate that in bold, it talks about that there's no recourse against us or, or any of us individually or as a group or the city of Barstown, any of its officers or... So it's an obligation on the part of Bethlehem and the Archdiocese of Louisville to repay these. And so we're just the conduit, as they've said, through which this, this would be obtained. So what they're asking for tonight is adoption of this resolution so the process can begin.
If there's not any other questions of people representing the pastor here today or Tim, I would ask for a motion then to approve the resolution 2018, our 2018-07 as it pertains to the dinner and agreement with the city of Barstown, Roman Catholic Bishop Lloyd.
And that's on your agenda under finance aid?
Looking for a motion. Motion of Councilman Copeland, and I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Doherty, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, someone would say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, resolution is carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck on your project, and I'm sure we'll see you down the road.
We will.
You will, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We were expecting some people from LGD to be here and to talk about these gas franchisees. I don't see up here, I don't know if they didn't know where the council chambers are or if they got time mixed up. I mean, they were notified, it was supposed to be 5:00. But I think as you all remember, we discussed it earlier this year, we have to renew our franchise agreement with the LGD. And you can see in the ordinance here, I think we need to introduce it, but let Tim Butler read it. And it's just a first reading this evening, hopefully we can have them here for the second reading, should there be any questions that come from it.
And Mayor, I'll just point out that this is the, this is the ordinance that allows us to grant a franchise. There are steps that have to be taken after the ordinance is passed, there has to be an advertising for basically bids, and then once we accept whatever bid, well, you all would accept the bid and then enter into an agreement. And it's in that agreement that the franchise B that's set is established, is not established by the ordinance. And I can, if someone wants to introduce that, I can read that if you'd like.
Yes, sir. First, now I'll introduce ordinance number B 2018-11, gas franchise. First read.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number B 2018-11, Commonwealth of Kentucky City of Barstown, ordinance creating a franchise for the erection, laying, and maintenance of natural gas facilities and apartment facilities and equipment in, along, and across the public, both roads, streets, alleys, and other public places in the city of Barstown, Kentucky, for furnishing and selling national natural gas by means of said facilities and providing for the sale of such, said franchise. If the mayor walks back in, I'm going to jump at the end. Whereas the city of Barstown, city wishes to ensure that natural gas service continues to be furnished to its citizens in a reliable and efficient manner, whereas the city is aware that the provision of such service requires the continued use of public streets, ways, alleys, and other public places. Whereas the franchise granted to and acquired by the Louisville Gas and Electric Company on April 8, 1986, under which that utility provided such service, has expired by its terms, April 8, 2006. Whereas the city wishes to provide for the sale of a new franchise for the benefit of the citizenry, given effect to section 96.010 of Kentucky Revised Statutes. Now therefore bid ordained as follows. Section one, an exclusive franchise, franchise, to the use of the city's public rights of way as described in franchise agreement attached, this ordinance is hereby created. Section two, franchise created by this ordinance shall be bid in accordance with the applicable requirements of the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky and chapter 424 of Kentucky Revised Statutes, as well as any applicable city ordinances. Section three, the franchise created by this ordinance shall be awarded to the highest and best bidder and shall be determined by the city in its sole discretion. In awarding the franchise, the city shall consider the technical, managerial, and financial qualifications of the bidder to perform its obligations under the franchise. Section four, the winning bidder and the city shall negotiate, execute, and be bound by a franchise agreement with terms identical to or substantially identical to the franchise agreement referenced in section one above and attached here too, such agreement to contain terms that are fair and reasonable to the city, to the purchaser of the franchise, and to the patrons of the utility, KRS section 96.010. Such franchise agreement shall take effect on July 1, 2018, to allow the city and the winning bidder to develop appropriate procedures for identifying and reviewing the natural gas consuming entities within the city's corporate limits. Section five, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section six, should any section, clause, line, paragraph, or part of this ordinance or the attached agreement be held unconstitutional or invalid for any reason, the same shall not affect the remainder of this ordinance or the attached agreement as applicable. Section seven, time is of the essence in carrying out the terms and provisions of this ordinance and the franchise created herein. Section eight, this ordinance shall become effective from and after its passage and publication as required by law.
Okay, thank you, Tim. This is the first reading, so we'll have a second reading at the next meeting. Hopefully I would assume to ask the representatives from LGD here to discuss if we can detail or answer any questions you all might have. We'll knock it up on the agenda, we'll catch back up with you. Are there stuff we moved around to accommodate Bethlehem there? Have cemetery deeds, Herbert Handman Woodgrave and David Oliver Woodgrave, approved that by unanimous consent. Then we have a appointment on the Spalding Hall Board, so asking for a motion to approve. We have a part of Keith West's Spalding Hall Board for a two-year term that starts today and would expire May of 2020. Could there be a motion for that reappointment?
So moved there.
Motion, Councilman Doherty, that's a second. Second, by Councilman Butler. Any discussion? All in favor, somebody's about to say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Okay, down to, we've got second readings now on three ordinances. The first would be B 2018-07, as it relates to the outdoor cafes. As you all remember, we cleaned that language up in that ordinance so that all the establishments in downtown had the same basic rules regarding serving the customers outside on the city's sidewalks. Do you have, just a vote?
Nope, so you can read it.
Okay.
And I'm ready. Ordinance number B 2018-07, some 07, an ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance related to chapter 122, outdoor cafes of the city of Barstown's code ordinances. The city council of the city of Barstown, Kentucky does ordain as follows. The amendments made to chapter 122, outdoor cafes, section 12202, permit required, and 12205, forms and conditions of the city of Barstown's code ordinances, as follows. Section 12202, permit required. B, permits shall be issued only to businesses properly licensed by the city which wish to provide service to patrons or to locate tables and chairs and other objects directly related to their business. Food and refreshment service on the public property immediately adjacent to their business, strike. No outdoor cafe permit shall be issued to any business that sells alcoholic beverages unless that business establishes that at least 50% of its gross revenue is deprived, derived from the sale of food, in strike. Section 12205, forms and conditions. In addition to naming the permitting and any other information deemed appropriate by the administrator, the permit shall contain the following conditions. Subsection one, each permit shall be effective for one fiscal year from strike, July 1 through June 30, in strike. Add, May 1 through April 30, in addition. Prorated at $37.50 for three months or less, and subject to annual renewal unless revoked or suspended prior to expiration. No fees shall be refunded for revocations or periods of suspension. All ordinances in conflict herewith or hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force immediately upon its passage. Approval and publication is required by law.
Since this is the second reading, or ask for an individual...
Well, we need a motion.
A motion. A motion for the approved ordinance B 2018-07, as read by the city attorney. So, motion of Councilman Butler, and I have a second.
Second.
Second, by Councilman Sheckels, any discussion? Seeing none, then ask for an individual vote, those who are all in favor, starting with Councilman Kelly.
Aye.
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 Thank you, motion of the ordinances. All right, we have a second reading then on B 2018-10, chapter 32, as it relates to the city council. Just prefer to read that one as well.
Yes, sir. Summary of ordinance number B 2018-10. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance relating to chapter 32, city council of the city of Barstown's code ordinances. The city council of the city of Barstown, Kentucky does ordain as follows, that the amendments made to chapter 32, city council, section 3205, compensation of the council member of the city of Barstown code ordinances, as follows. 3205, compensation of the council member. Each council member shall be paid the sum of, strike, $750, add $1,250 per month, add, and shall be adjusted annually to increase compensation by the amount equal to the increase in the consumer price index for the preceding year as calculated by the Department for Local Government. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect. Following publication, summary is required by law.
Thank you, Tim. This is ordinance number B 2018-10, I need a motion to approve.
I'll move. Okay, I'll move that we put adoption of ordinance number B 2018-10, chapter 32, city council.
Okay, and the motion, I have a second.
Second.
The second, by Councilman Sheckels, and reading discussion. So it's the second reading, so I'll ask all those in favor, someone's about to say aye, starting with Councilman Doherty.
Aye.
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 Thank you. All the ordinances approved. The next one is B 2018-9, chapter 31, related to the mayor.
Yes, summary of ordinance number B 2018-09. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended an ordinance relating to chapter 31, mayor of the city of Barstown's code ordinances. The city of council of the city of Barstown, Kentucky does ordain as follows, that amendments be made to chapter 31, mayor, section 3104, compensation of the city of Barstown's code ordinances, as follows. Section 3104, compensation. The mayor shall be paid the sum of, strike, $1,500, add $2,500 per month, add, and shall be adjusted annually to increase the compensation by the amount equal to the increase in the consumer price index for the preceding year as calculated by the Department for Local Government. All ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force immediately upon its passage and approval and publication as required by law.
Thank you, Tim. And I ask for a motion then to approve ordinance number B 2018-09, as it relates to chapter 31.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve summary of ordinance B 2018-09, as it relates to the compensation of the mayor, as read by our city attorney.
Thank you. Motion for Councilman Doherty, that's a second.
Second.
Second, by Councilman Sheckels, and we have a discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, somebody's about to say aye, we'll start with an individual vote, starting with Councilman Kelly.
Aye.
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 Thank you all. Sorry about how we had to kind of jump around today on this agenda, but people make it work. Let's go back up and see if there's any council comments, anyone that has anything the council needs to bring before us this evening.
I think we talked enough yesterday.
Well, I would just like to thank everyone for coming out to the Kentucky Black Caucus Summit. Truly appreciate the city sponsoring the hospitality event, and I appreciate your presence. Thank you.
Thank you all. Y'all did a good job, hosted it. Enjoyed my stop there Friday. Under mayor's report, I'll just bring you up to date. We have closed on the Church of Christ property, signed it and paid for it. We're ready to close on the Kentucky Village property. We have the deed claimed up and I think we've got, I don't think there's, maybe one other thing we've got to get signed off on.
Right.
And to close on that, we have to get, I guess that has to be recorded, that quick claim?
Yeah, it's just, it has to be recorded. It can be recorded at the same time at first in succession, so...
Just, we had a quick claim on the deed that I decided Saturday, so we'll probably, I would say we'll probably close on that by the end of the week.
I will soon.
And then we're still, we just, those two are kind of faster tracked than the Nuka property, we're just getting the survey finished up on the Nuka property. Once we get the survey, then we have the calls and it'll go on the deed, we'll be ready to close on, on that property. And then just looked at our two newcomers here tonight, we want to recognize Elijah Brooks, who's fell there for his dad, Jim, and Dennis George, who's fell in for Randy Patrick. I think there's some political debates that are going on as we speak that are, they brought in their...
Second base.
Second base. Back up second base and then back up first base. Randy and Jim are preoccupied with the debates, so we're happy to have you all here with us tonight. And Tracy is here with a whole big bunch of information. We all, we've got you all the first draft of our budget. I've been through it three times, and Tracy and I've been through it another two times together, asking all my questions and giving it to you all today. Probably that you all have it for, well, probably a week or so before we, we can, I'd say week to two weeks to go over it. I think the good news is we got it to you a little earlier this year than last year, because last year, some of this worked in the same position we're in now until late April, so we really didn't get a chance to get started on it until after the debate. But this year we got a much earlier start. So I'll just make a few comments on it. Obviously I'll get you a more formal draft once we get to a more filed draft, but you're going to see, there's really some positives to take from it. You know, first of all, what the General Assembly did by phasing in the pension contributions from cities and counties and school districts on the CERS, took us from facing a $700,000 increase in our current annual contributions down to $175,000, which was a huge help to us, particularly in the general fund, because half of that $700,000 was going to go to the general fund, which are not the funds that you can just all of a sudden turn to stick it on and create more money. So that was a big help to us. You're also going to see that we don't have any indirect cost allocations this year. Last year we eliminated the utility dividend. I'll let Tracy speak to that. The positive effect of the lack of indirect cost allocation is that the previous year, the utility funds paid a huge part of that, so it's gonna allow the utility funds to perform better and meet these major capital projects that we've got coming down the road within the utility departments. Tracy, you might talk a little bit about how you, Linda Aine with her advice, made some changes that helped us eliminate indirect cost allocations.
Well, everybody knows what indirect cost allocation is for, for the use of the building, for use of me, Carrie, and you all, and anybody in admin finance. So, I went there and I did the same percentage as far as wages for both of these departments, admin and finance, and now they're spread across the utilities, like we do for like the customer service reps, basically. And anything that I buy from my department, I would usually take it out of finance, even though it was typically for cable or it could have been for electric, or just start charging them how they're supposed to be. When I talked to Linda Gray, she was ecstatic, because it's something auditors hate is indirect cost, because it's harder for them to explain, even though it's really clean for us, because it's an adjustment, but then they have to figure out in the audit, how to do it. So, she was almost like a little girl in a key store, so.
So, expensive silver and chair, just the way your accounting form would change.
Right. So, and she said.
Is it the same type of formulas before?
No, we just, it's no longer a formula. That was part of the problem, is it was what, what do we need to balance the general fund? And you plug in how much you need, and that's how you come up with it. It was never a set number, at least this, the way we're actually, I think last year it was one and a half million that we used in indirect costs, whereas we didn't even use that much to spread it across all the utilities. But it's based on a percentage of the customers that we have for each department.
So, I thought you have some sort of objective formula, rather than just say how much we need.
Well, it's a percentage, but that's what it was before. It was how much do you need to balance?
I think what they're doing now is they're saying about how much time do we spend on this, that's what we'll allocate, as opposed to, yes.
Oh, I don't know, I thought we had some sort of formula before. I didn't know if this is what we did. When I talked about it, I think she started that, in that case, or something she said a couple of years ago, I talked to her.
So, you're just taking, you're just taking the admin expense and the finance expense, all the personnel and that part, the way it takes, and then spread it in the utility department.
Right. So, it still touches on admin, which is like 5%, finance is 5%, and then the rest of it, utilities makes sense.
So, it's similar to Buckman being salaries in those departments as opposed to catering costs line, those are my wife. Right. Just some other comments I'll make, you know, I think I told you the last week or so, we've now created a repaying a land purchase account, number 8990. Right now, the only cost in that is obviously the land purchase, because we haven't got, you know, haven't selected an architect, haven't got bids on what the renovation costs are gonna be. Those have been advertised, the departments that are gonna be utilizing this land, utilities, public works, fire department, primarily at this point, anywhere from a 10 to 20-year amortization. The 10-year is probably on, more on the utility and public work side, because they're just, the cost of that project is really gonna be more just site work and gravel and storage, not as many capital projects like new construction of buildings and so forth. Probably some construction buildings, whereas fire departments will be advertised over a 20-year period, because you know, it's a large facility, you're gonna have some major renovation cost involved, so in order for that to be ever needed from a budget standpoint, the amortization needs to be over a 20-year period, because you know, fire department's not the department that generates a lot of revenue, so to make a job work in the budget. If we think it's practical when you're talking about any capital improvement, like a fire department building, to advertise that over a 20-year period versus 10 on some of the others. Of course, we'll, we'll come back, once we do have hired an architect and engineering firm to create the budget and also the plans and fit it out, once we have those, award those contracts, which you all will be told you on later, so we'll come back and amend the budget at that point. We've got some major projects. Water is about 2.7 for this coming year, but a million of that's gonna be carried over from this year's budget. Sewers, 6.5 million, 1.4 of that is carried over from this year that we won't be completed. A major project that we are having, we're gonna get completed, is the renovation of the fire department substation, for the major electrical project there. In years past, sometimes we would list some projects or equipment purchases that were subject to grants, we decided not to just put something in there that we don't know is gonna happen. If the grants do get awarded, then we would come back and amend the budget and add the cost figures. The fire department had some, they're gonna be having some grants out for some major equipment, like a new pumper, and what's an air trader cart?
Air trainer cart?
Air trader cart, it's like $189,000 item, it's a grant item, it's not in the budget, but that was listed.
Oh, it's, it goes with the asthma equipment, so it's by air for asthma people.
And some other projects are all gonna be contingent by the grants, so we just have to put them in. There's no reason to inflate the budget when there's not a true project that's gonna get funded without the grants.
We have been known by the mayor that the grant for the fire department was turned down.
The pumper. And the department heads, I think, overall, have done a really good job of getting in and scrutinizing their current budgets and looking for savings, and that is gonna work out to where we're gonna be able to help in on the wage, and our situation in the city is in the same situation everybody else is, there's a lot of pressure, particularly skilled positions, whether it's a CDO driver, whether it's a police officer, or fire department person, equipment operators, a lot of pressure, as we all know, both in private and public sector on wages. So, I want to commend the department heads, have done a good job of finding some savings that we're gonna be able to use to help improve wages in a number of departments, so I think will make us more competitive, so I'm happy for that, so. Let's just kind of some quick comments, you know, we just got it, probably start visiting this, give y'all some time to go through it, and then probably in a couple of weeks, we'll start having a portion of our meeting, we may call this working session, meeting devoted to the budget. We've got plenty of time now to meet our June 30th requirement for having a proven balanced budget for 2019, this year. Any questions on that? I know I was coming up through that pretty quickly, but that's just kind of some of the highlights of getting going into it.
Yeah, I talked to her, the first one, so I said, there's gotta be typos here, because compared to what last year's and this year, but it's propelled a way to change in allocation.
Yeah, I figured it easily.
One thing, under the financial billing expense, last year budget was $60,000, this year $65,000.
That is, we pay $40,000 to the PDK's office, and the rest of it's for putting lanes on for property tax, and then moving lanes once they've been.
It was all property tax, and it's not anything with utility, probably. You know, it looks like the revenues are fairly conservative, because see, the property taxes budget for $6,000, more than requested so far this year. And I would think that since they're filling up some warehouses, even though we gave a bait, and all taxes on the real estate, the taxes still apply to where, what's in the warehouse, so I think.
Yeah, we don't, those actually come in after you all set the property tax rate, so the revenues even more than what we expect in October.
I don't know how much we get per warehouse, or per barrel, or whatever, how much that would be.
This is our first, you know, draft, you guys do, so clean it up right now.
Right.
Top of the boat, huh? But, I guess the department heads did a good job of getting it to us in time and manner. Tracy had to kind of nudge a few of them a little bit towards the end of her deadline, but they made, they made the deadline, they got it done.
Well, I don't have any problem with conserving, because that means you have a surplus hopefully next year, something that, if we can, if we can serve them still balance you, it's great.
Any questions? Nothing else, I'm gonna ask for a motion for adjournment?
So.
Motion Counselman Shekels, do I have a second? Second, Counselman Copeland, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned, thank you all. Thank you all for yesterday, too, I think we did a good meeting, a lot of discussion, and it's a big decision tonight.